My name's Colleen Stanley, I'm the chairperson for this ad hoc meeting. Tonight's meeting is the amendment to the peddler's ordinance, section 11, 4-6, Rogers Park concessions. It is now 6:40 and we are meeting in the caucus room, third floor, City Hall. Once again, my name's Colleen Stanley, I'm the chairperson. I have with me tonight Mike Alice, Councilman Fred Visconti. We have with us Corporation Council, Les Pincher, and also Director of Parks and Rec, Nick Kaplanis. We also will be having, I think shortly, Antonio Ayaterola, Director of Public Works. So I think what we can do is possibly start off with a request made by our Parks and Rec Director, Nick Kaplanis, maybe he can start us off and tell us what he wants to accomplish.
Okay, the plan here is to eliminate motorized vehicles from Rogers Park. There are numerous vehicles that are parked there or go through there during the course of the week, in the weekend, evenings and weekends. There are a number of vehicles that pretty much stake out a piece of the park and claim it is their own. We have had issues with other vendors that also have vendor licenses come into the park and park near one of these vendors that are down there for the majority of the time. There have been some conflicts within territorial conflicts. In addition, when these trucks are on move or go through the park, they many times will double park, block cars, park in places where people have to cross the street in order to access whatever they're vending, which is an issue with safety and the health of those people that are going back and forth across the street. Do you want me to continue as far as the rest of what we have proposed as far as the elimination of the...
What were your ideas?
Well, we had talked about the possibility of eliminating motorized vehicles altogether and setting up fixed structures in various areas of the park. Obviously, there's an expense associated with the structure and also the ability to bring water, sewer, and power to any of these specified locations. We identified several places that it would be possible to put a building. And as far as who would put the cost of putting up such a structure is a question. There's several possible ideas that have been discussed. One, the city doing it, another is having someone actually erect the building themselves that would be interested in housing a concession type business.
How would that work? Maybe Antonio can...
Well, I don't know anything.
The attributing of a building in some of the locations we have talked about, accessing water, sewer...
Yeah, that's, we actually have two areas that would have pretty decent access to water and sewer. We just provided an additional area of opportunity next to the fields that we just constructed, which was not there before. The Veterans Hall, it used to be on a septic system, we actually brought a lateral to that, and then we put a spur in to possibly do some type of a concession area in that, just to the left of the building, if you're standing in a parking lot, to the left of the building. So there is opportunity for sewer and water.
And you said two areas, where's the other one?
The other area is right where the controls are for the spray scape, which is basically that little hub directly behind the playground. Looks like somewhat of a shed. There's sanitary sewer and water over there.
Mr. Kaplanis just said that there would be a couple of different ways of putting a fixed concession stand. One, let the city pay for it themselves, two, having somebody else build it. I don't understand how that would work, how you'd have so... I mean, I know how Rogers Park, the baseball, they did it. I mean, they came into the city and applied for all the permits, they raised money, they built it, and they run it. And also, all proceeds go back into Rogers Park and take care of the fields and what have you, and they did a phenomenal job, and once it was built, they donate it back to the city.
Yep.
Is that what you would, is that what we would consider, getting some nice, good person that would just have enough money to... Because it is pretty pricey. I looked at some of the costs that concession stands...
Three jobs are very costly.
I just got some stuff from planning, from Sean Harity for some, the storage concession stand for Kaplanis Field. I mean, I only have the estimated value, it was $150,000.
That's just a...
The DHS, yeah, no, well, it's storage concessions, bleachers, and scoreboard. Now, mind you, we have another one here for Danbury High School, and it was a DHS concession stand and toilets, which, you know, we're not asked, we wouldn't ask somebody to put in toilets. But the number here, estimated value at $428,600. These are huge numbers to try and get somebody to come in and bid on something that's seasonal. So that's what, I just wanted to know what your ideas were. Because I have a suggestion, but go ahead.
With Danbury Baseball, I mean, that's a viable entity that has plenty of people to operate during the season. The money that they raise goes back into the program.
Right.
And, you know, it was an investment that they made for their own organization that has paid off for them. Any of the other locations that we could possibly identify down at the park doesn't have such a...
Well, we have the Industrial League Baseball, that's a huge organization.
It is, it is, and there's...
It's not any different than what Danbury Baseball is.
Right. But I don't know anything about their financing, nor their willingness to even want to get involved with something like that. I mean, of course, we can approach them for that, but I take that a little differently because it's a bunch of people to go and play a game, and then they're out and then school comes in and they're out. I mean, a few people come in and watch the game. It's not like on the baseball side. So, you know, I don't know that they have the same type of interest in putting that type of time, effort, and energy into, you know, having that type of establishment in order to raise funds for their leagues.
I'm gonna try to answer the question that you have. What I would envision, and what's been done in other communities, is you actually put an RFP together and you bring in a couple of companies that are in the business of running a concession stand, and you do, you know, the contracts can be written in such a way where you would have a scope of what will be built, and a commitment to that vendor for having the opportunity to run it and keep the proceeds from running it with maybe some kickbacks to the city on a shared profit, but that's how we would work. That's what some other communities have done. And, you know, based, there's a, they would have to do an economic study on whether or not they think that that investment over the period of year that we're gonna lease it to them would actually pay off the investment. But that's really the venue of how we would get to have somebody come in and not use city funds, or maybe we would provide some, you know, like a sewer and water connection, but they would do, they would do the actual building. And a building's needs and the cost directly associated with the building is all determined based on what they're gonna do in that concession stand. As you start getting into cooking more and more variety of food, the price goes higher and higher and higher.
You need vented hoods.
Exactly, and you need...
Ancel systems.
Ancel systems and things like that, but some of the concessions based on selling ice cream or a prepackaged product, where maybe you're just doing some heat lamps, that's a very simple, very easy-to-build type of a facility, and they come prepackaged. What you described there, these are multi-square foot buildings that have full-blown kitchens, two, three freezers, refrigerators...
Let me, the concession stand at Danbury High School has full kitchen?
Has a pretty intricate system.
Has a heating oven, I believe, a regular oven.
I think it even has an oven.
Do they do the cooking there? I mean, I know, like, for, when it came time for football, you know, when they ran the concession stands, we, you know, they used to ask the parents to bring food or, you know, donate, you know, that's how they did it. And, I mean, that's really not allowed. I mean, in a restaurant, you can't make food at home and bring it to the restaurant. It has to be done on premises.
Everyone at these concessions has a license by the Health Department to do specific things. If they're doing something above and beyond that, then, you know, obviously they're in violation of their license.
And they have to be a certified food handler.
Yeah, you have to have a certified food handler that supervises your activities. But just based on that number that you gave me, man, I could build you a restaurant for $450,000. Pretty close to it.
No, no, thanks. Okay, well, anyway, that's just something I got from Sean Harity. And then, does anybody have any questions?
If I may, through the chair, to Corporation Council. In putting up a enclosed standalone concession stand, you're selling food, obviously, what What does the state statute on whether you would have to or not have to have bathroom facilities?
Probably Health Department, would that best be answer, best to answer that question? It's a park, I'm not sure, I'm not sure about that. You'd have to get Health Department to weigh in on that one.
I'm not sure either. I would think that if it's a, you know, a restaurant where people, you know, where people come inside the building, then I think you need to have facilities, but if something, you know, over the counter, I don't know that it's an obligation.
Because the concession stand that is already there, they do have a bathroom, but right now, they just have porta-potties throughout. Is there even a...
I don't think, you know, I'd have to kind of side with Nick. I don't think there's a, and I wouldn't know, the Health Department wouldn't know, I don't think there's a requirement for bathroom facilities if you are just, you know, have a concession where you're not sitting people down, you're not providing an opportunity for them to sit down within your facility, but we can check on that real quick, a quick phone call to the Health Department.
Do you have any questions?
Yes, the chair, Nick or Antonio. Now, I understand we're proposed on the spray park side, but where would that one be on the other side of the road? Or I'm assuming on the other side, right?
Well, we talked about the possibility of putting, locating one down at the far end by the new turf field.
Oh, all the way down, right? All the way down.
You know, and I mean, from a facilities standpoint, as far as sewer, water, electricity, it's pretty accessible as far as, you know, accessing that type of, what you need in order to have a building there. And as I think about that, I mean, as nice, complex as it is, and as much as it's utilized, there isn't as much use if it's that far down into the park as it is over by the playground or by the softball fields.
Right, or...
You know, on that side.
Yeah, on that, yeah. Okay.
I just have one question too. After doing some investigation on the, the disordinance, I was told, and I'm not sure who told me, if it was the town clerk, or if he even was the mayor, that we don't even allow, or we're not supposed to even have vendors on city property at all. But we do, because obviously there's a need for services, and I think that the services that we have right now down at Rogers Park are needed service, and they're enjoyed by a lot of people, but it's just gotten out of hand. So what, I feel that, you know, during this meeting, we need to kind of grasp hold of what's going on down there, because obviously, like you said, there's issues with fighting over spots and garbage and safety issues, but when we talk about motorized vehicles, we're talking about ice cream men, and I just can't see a safety issue of an ice cream man not allowing them in our parks. I think that's gone a bit too far. I had some suggestions. I also, you know, after reading through the full ordinance and listening to Mr. Ayaterola, and then talking about the buildings, I thought that the concept of a concession stand is something that should be considered, but I don't think at this time that it should be a cost that, that the taxpayers should incur during this economy. I think that it would be a great idea to establish a Rogers Park zone and designated areas for vending, but I don't think, and this is just my opinion, and we're here to talk about it, I thought that maybe we could limit it, limit the vendors that are in Rogers Park, which would maybe help with the safety issues, and maybe areas that could be designated, like Mr. Kaplanis said, maybe three areas, maybe one near the softball field, one near the, and I'm talking motorized. And they don't have to be motorized, being that they're gonna be driving around, but three, maybe four, you know, we can decide on that.
Mobile units.
Mobile units, maybe one near the softball fields, between fields two and three, one near the place scape, one near the new field that we have. I mean, that's something that I thought about, and then I also thought that we could possibly maybe have something, in doing that, do something like we do with the Candlewood Lake Park and have it go out to bid. Have these three or four designated areas, have them each numbered, and have people bid on them, go through a bidding process, through purchasing department, and, and get as much money as we can, because, you know what, it is a park, and, you know, it's like we have, we have customers there for people. And we should, we should, I mean, we're providing a service, we have our parks department that cleans, and our public, you know, guys that are out there doing the fields and everything, so I think that the city should be compensated for, you know, the property. Now, that's just something to maybe go off of. Do I have any more ideas or suggestions? I mean, I think that it's a good idea to start with right now.
Yeah, we need to get a little better control on what's happening down there. I mean, Nick, did you talk about some of the fistfights then?
I just said that there were some confrontations.
I mean, you know, there's, there's things going on down there that, you know, are some concerns to us. Our biggest safety issue, and I don't want you guys to think that there is no safety issue, but when a vendor pulls into a, into a spot, and you have kids that are running from everywhere to try to get to that vendor's truck, creates a real issue. And it happens. I'm talking about kids running across the street, across parking lots, across travelways in a parking lot. The other big problem that we have is there seems to be a real hotspot on either side of the parking lot, which is between, what field is it, in the spray scape.
Yeah, lines what?
So what ends up happening is it blocks the availability to see what, left or right when you're pulling out of there, because the truck's there. So now, that driver keeps pulling out, keeps pulling out, to a point where his nose is into actually incoming traffic. So we want to eliminate a lot of those issues, and, you know, maybe the first step is we try doing something with having dedicated areas with a dedicated person serving that lot. Now, if we have an issue with his performance...
And a dedicated spot.
His garbage, garbage is another major issue, then we could try to do something a little more aggressive, but, you know...
But if we were to give designated areas, designated spots, designated people, they would be...
It'd eliminate...
They wouldn't have to take care of the garbage, too.
Right.
They would have, they would have certain responsibilities in order to keep...
Yeah, at least that area. I mean, the, I mean, the people down at Rogers, or Rogers Park, they, they keep it clean. I mean, they have a lot of volunteers. The softball fields don't have as many volunteers, they have just a few people running their organization, they do a great job doing what they do. And there are people that are all over there with their garbage, so you can't expect the few designated areas for the vending to clean up their entire park. They need to chip in and help also.
To expand a little bit on that, I actually went down there the other day with my son on Memorial Day to see exactly what was going on. Now, we're down there quite a bit, because my son's involved with baseball, but we never make it down, you know, a little bit lower. So right across from the Rose Garden, it happened to be Memorial Day, there's a couple of vendors there, so I said, you know, Michael, why don't we go get something, see what it's all about? And actually, both of the vendors that were there did have a Danbury address, and that's what I actually was gonna suggest, that if we move forward with this and let vendors there, maybe there can be a preference to city taxpayers to have a preference, you know, for a spot down there in a designated area. And, you know, what I saw when I was down there, and obviously it was just, you know, may not have been the busiest day, because it wasn't Memorial Day, it was clean, they did have a garbage can out, you know, they had a couple of picnic tables out for people to sit on, but I have seen the congestion that you're talking about down there. Now, the only thing that, you know, if you make an attraction across the road, and like I say, I'm up on the north side of the property more because of the baseball, and I understand what you're saying about, you know, the safety concerns with kids running out, and believe me, that's, that's one of my greatest fears, and, you know, when you hear, when you're on the baseball field and you hear cars screeching to a halt, and you never know what the hell it is, you know, if it's a ball running out in the road, or, you know, what's going on, it's definitely a concern. But from what I've seen with the ice cream truck, you know, it's normally, I mean, when I was at practice the other day, the kids filed the ice cream truck on, you know, from the field, and I says, all right, guys, I said, you do this drill, you know, right the first time, I'll buy you ice cream. Ice cream truck pulls over, you know, right in the parking lot, and that's normally what happens. He normally has his route, you know, and the kids know, he's gonna get to you, you know, he's gonna come over this side, he'll be over the softball side, and, you know, he kind of makes his rounds. But these other vendors, I don't see the big attraction to the kids run, you know, across the street, because Danbury Youth Baseball does have the blockhouse there, there is enough, you know, variety besides ice cream, and I, and I think that's one of the toughest things that we're gonna face with this, is that I just don't think that we can deprive, you know, any young kid of seeing the ice cream truck come along, you know what I mean? It's just, I mean, I think everybody here has childhood memories of, of the ice cream truck.
When you say motorized, yeah, motorized vehicle, they're part of that.
The only thing I would say to that is that then maybe within the permitting of an ice cream truck, there has to be some type of rules as far as where, you know, can't double park on the street, or maybe there's a way...
Maybe, no, stop.
Where he, where he can stop. I mean, obviously, you pull into the parking lot where, where field one is, fine, he's off the road.
Right.
In the base, in the softball area, pull in inside of there, you're off the road. You go down to the far end by Veterans, there's a parking lot there, you pull in there. Down by the playground...
There's no way...
You know, in the, you know, the...
Don't you see part right by the fence?
Parks and Rec parking lot, you know, but then people would be across the street from the playground, or maybe he's on, you know, right over by field two and the softball field. I mean, you know, I think you could maybe designate, you know, hey, these are the spots that you can go, and then they go around back Mountainville to Rogers Park side.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
So, that's just, you know, that would limit at least, because the fact, I think with the ice cream trucks, I mean, they bust through Rogers Park once or twice in the evening, or, you know, maybe three or four times over the course of the weekend, but then they have a route, where they go around to a lot of the residents, you know, the residential areas and go through neighborhoods and sell as well. So, you know, going into the park area maybe requires just some more specific rules, which I don't know, I don't believe there's any, any restrictions that we put on anyone that has a vendor license at this point.
But isn't there a restriction? I mean, we're not supposed to have any vendors on any city property, period. I'm not saying that we're not allowing it.
My knowledge has never been enforced.
It's never been enforced, but it's on the books, so it's something that's not been enforced. I mean, we could very easily solve this by just following what's already on the books, but I don't want to do that, because obviously there's a need, and people enjoy seeing it down there. They enjoy going to the blockhouse, they enjoy grabbing a hot dog, watching a softball game, so I don't think we have to go that far. That's why I said, you know...
Colin, can you recite where that restriction is? Because that...
That's just what I, that's just what I think the mayor told me, that we don't have, that we don't allow it. We had an issue over at Hatters Park with, that was city property, and, you know, they had issues with the girls' softball field, and then we had the guy with the bowling.
Yeah, it comes up, it comes up with, it came up with the Candlewood Park concession, because in the park, we had a fixed contract as we, as we grew out.
That's another one.
And so that the vendor who came across the fence stopped his vehicle there, there was an argument about that. I'm not aware of any specific, if you take out a peddler's ordinance, I'm not aware of a restriction that doesn't allow a peddler to go on Rogers Park property, subject to reasonable regulation by Nick and his, his people. But, you know, that's neither here nor there, I just, I was curious if I, to make sure I knew that.
I'm not really sure, I can get that information, but...
I mean, they exist, I just, I know the peddler ordinance pretty well, and I'm pretty sure there's nothing in there that...
So you can't be on city property? You just have to get permission?
It doesn't say yes or no. It just says, if you want an ordinance to vend in the city, here's what you gotta do. It doesn't say public, private, or whatever like that. I think we can restrict it if we wanted to.
I did talk with Scott Leroy from the Health Department about it, and, you know, you know, there's, there's a lot of issues that I have with vending, hot dog vendors, their carts or what have you. I didn't realize it, but when they come in for a permit, they come in, they apply for the license, and they have one inspection, and that's it. Opposed to the restaurants who have four inspections, a minimum of four, up to maybe eight per year. And, you know, they're, they're always watched by the Health Department, so when I talk about safety issues, I talk about, those are my safety issues, when it comes to the food that, you know, they're supplying or what have you. But I mean, I do have a copy of the, the vending and peddler's license that they have them fill out, and there is an area on here that says location where you are vending. So I, you know, it's just something...
Colleen?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, Joe's...
I know Joe had his hand on that one. Go ahead.
No, I just, I wanted to give some additional focus to what Nick has started on saying, that we were asked, the top-down picture is that there's a Rogers Park property, right? It's like a, if you will, a square, and the idea was to present, for consideration, a restructuring of that such that you address two concerns. One is the helter-skelter nature of the vending, you know, guys coming in, there's, there's expectations, they can park in one area and for years, and there's fights and whatever. That's number one. Number two is the safety concerns that would, are, would be addressed by wheeled vehicles going down the road, in and out, whatever. Those are the two issues. So the concept was to close off the square, if you will, create a zone that would prohibit and regulate both those things completely. So that was the idea. The second part of that idea would be to, in order to obtain revenue for the city, to create one or two or more fixed locations where the city can make a deal with somebody to sell whatever, and then the city would get an annual fee for that, plus maybe some revenue stream or whatever we work out. So those were the components of that, and the ordinance that you have before you is 11-5, is a brand new ordinance that would create that zone for that purpose. So that's a really quick summary of what the idea was, and as far as doing something short of that, that's, that's your call. Nick did a good job presenting the business plan, which is, you know, to find locations, figure out what are the costs, if it's, you know, we have the ability to put a facility in there, then go out to the market and obtain bids and quotes for companies that would do that, and arrangements that we would talk to them about. So that's kind of the top-down look to solve a couple or three problems we have to park now.
And, in going along with that, the actual, you know, building of the site, putting something up, is probably the biggest obstacle that we face from the standpoint of the city for, you know, finding the... for, you know, general, finding the resources in order to do it, or as Antonio stated, was to possibly find someone that would be interested in coming in and either erecting a structure or taking an existing structure and modifying it in order to be able to accommodate and vend it.
Or what about having a motorized vehicle drive in and be stationary?
In, you know.
Some of them are so.
All the discussions that, you know, Colleen and I spoke, the, the opinion that I kind of was able to come up with based on some discussions that we had was the financing of something like this at this time was probably not practical. So, in other discussions that we had, we talked about, alright, well, maybe assigning various sections within the park where someone could park, and that would be theirs and no one else in the park. Or no one else would be allowed into the park because we have these designated areas. They bid, it was bid out, they, they they had a high bid, and that, that spot is theirs from, you know, April through October, which is basically the season that we're, that we're talking about. I mean, that's, that's really something beyond what was initially discussed in light of the fact that as good, as, you know, as much as we'd like to be able to see these structures put up at the park, we're not sure at this time that that is gonna be a practical thing. Or finding someone to come in and actually do it for us.
And I think what you're talking about doing would probably deal with a lot of the issues that we're seeing down there.
Might be something to try at first.
If you do that, you still have the problem with the wheeled vehicles on the roads. Even if you designate those guys in there, you can't stop unless you do it by law. Cannot stop other vendors from rolling down the streets and taking additional business. That's.
But we're gonna create the Rogers Park zone.
If you do that, but it sounds like if you, if you stop short of that and just have selected wheeled vendors chosen by bid to work, you're not dealing with the roads. You'd have to kind of adopt.
Right.
It's almost like a package deal in a way.
Yeah, nobody would bid on it.
No, I. No, absolutely. I'm not thinking that way. I'm, no, I'm talking about keeping the Rogers Park zone.
Right, right.
Having three or four fixed locations that love to bid. My only issue is the ice cream man. The ice cream man's gotta be able to go in. But I, yet I, you know, I talked to the permit center. They said as long as he was moving, they didn't care. Mr. Cabo?
Mrs. Stanley, thank you. Mr. Pinter, I heard you, you know, talk about the charge of the committee was to try to regulate the activity in the park versus prohibited, and I'm totally for that. And, and I think that your idea of having. It's okay. I think Mrs. Stanley's idea of having a, a, a three or four-spot designation for food service and have those areas designated out and say, this is where you park, this is your garbage cans, you're responsible for these two garbage cans. The city will take care of, Parks Department will take care of the rest of those garbage cans. But in the same light, you certainly could bid out the ice cream service to the park as well. And put an ice cream, let an ice cream vendor bid on who's gonna be there, and give them a designated parking spot behind each of these food service vendors in the three areas, and let them roll. If they want to roll through there, let them roll through there. But they have to pull over and park in those designated areas for the safety of the kids and the public that are there. So, you could, you could do both, bid out food service portion and ice cream service portion of it, and let somebody see if they want to take it. You may have a food service vendor that says, look, I'll do food service at Spot A, and I'll do the ice cream as well.
Well, I even said that. I said, you know, they've got three designated areas, and you would bid for the designated area that you want to bid for. Because somebody may not be interested to, over at the soccer fields.
But he certainly can have, he also, he certainly can have the bid in the park.
Yeah, he can have the bid for the entire park. In designated areas. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Thank you. Through the chair to Mr. Kaplanis. If, all the things that we're looking at, whether it's gonna be standalone or motorized or whatever, what, what is going on now with where the Westerners are?
Yeah.
Because they have a hard enough time drawing people with.
Well, the Westerners, the Westerners had several different things that they tried over the last couple of years. Last year, towards the middle of the season, they actually hired a caterer. And he comes in, I mean, he's a food handler. He comes in, and I'm not sure what the, what, what kind of goods they're selling. But he goes in, prepares it for Westerners to get a portion of whatever he makes each, each. Okay, so it's him. So, he brings in a gas grill, prepares the food, sells, you know, drinks, whatever. And the Westerners get a piece of that. And that's for twenty-two, twenty-four home games that they have. Now, prior to that, they had an arrangement with one of the vendors' truck that used to park there. And I don't know what the financial arrangement was, but they would come in and do their games as well. But they did away with that. And he's, he, I spoke with him this afternoon. He did feel that so far, this arrangement has worked out quite well with him.
They do have special nights. And, you know, one night is, I think it's the fire department, the police department, and they come in and they have hot dogs and hamburgers. Plus, if this other gentleman or whoever maybe comes in and he's doing his thing, you know, that they, that they get a portion of that money from. How do we, how do we include that in whatever else we're, we're looking to do? Or is that gonna be a separate issue?
An exemption. Is now Rogers Park, the blockhouse would be exempted?
It's gonna be grandfathered.
Yeah.
I don't know if we could do something like an exemption for people who are.
Off the road, you know, not in the parking lots. I mean, they're.
They're in the parking lots sometimes.
Well, no, the way he's gonna set up. Third baseline, you know, in between.
Get away with that, that truck up there, I guess. Truck is gone, yeah.
What I'm thinking is if it's maybe an exemption to, I'm just, just, an exemption if you are there for an organization. Like Rogers Park, all their proceeds go directly to helping take care of the fields. But I don't, and I know that the proceeds from the catering, that all the proceeds don't go back into the Westerners field.
Well, it goes into their organization, and, you know.
Just a portion of it.
Yeah, for whatever, you know, things that they need. I mean, the city, the city supplements part of their annual budget, which we've cut back now over the last two years. So, obviously, you know, whatever revenues they can pick up to make up for that is, is helpful to them.
Follow Corporation Council. Does there, do you see a problem with something like that?
Create an exemption? Parks, I see a problem, except for Kennedy Park, which I mean, I was probably.
Say it's my backyard, I don't.
That's different, the rules change.
Cut that.
I saw you selling hot dogs one, one Memorial Day, over the fence, I saw you.
Is that Paul Estefano Department? No, parks, I mean, the law is, is pretty clear that you can impose restrictions on the use of parks so long as they're, you know, related to safety, which would be the case with community health and all that, or reasonable regulations of other kinds where you wanna control the, you know, the park operations. You can, you can do things like that. There has to be a rational relationship to the larger purpose. If you're gonna exempt somebody, it's gotta be because, not because you like somebody, or, but because it makes sense for the overall business plan. That would be permissible.
Well, that there would be two real exemptions would be Danbury Baseball.
Danbury Baseball and the Westerners.
And the Westerners, who need it because it goes right back into the Westerners' organization.
Just remember, the whole idea of these fixed stands is, again, as my client indicated to me, the mayor indicated to me, was that they'd be a revenue producer. Their idea is to try to generate revenue, whether you generate enough revenue from wheeled vehicles in the fixed locations versus a, a unit, fixed unit, a block building, whatever, I don't know, who knows how much money you could make of it. The concept was, was you can get more money from a long-term contract, twenty-year, forty-year contract, whatever it is, with a property entity who would provide a multifaceted service. That was the idea, to generate revenue more than you could probably get from an ice cream person, even if you had a fixed location, because how much can they pay? So, that, that was the concept behind the fixed, non-wheeled location.
And then, just like you get your, the list, the permit is two hundred dollars a year. That's all it is. Now, I mean, there are literally thousands of people that go through the park over the course of
I know.
Spring, summer, and fall. I, I mean, I don't think anyone has any idea how much revenue comes into all of these vehicles that go in there. Obviously, somebody's making something, or there wouldn't be so many of them running around. I think the enticement of limiting the number of vendors within the park would say, alright, you know, we have, we'll say four. Four vendors that are exclusive to that, and everyone else is out. So, that would have to increase their revenue in such, if we should be able to command or, you know, put this out to bid and be able to generate some funds above and beyond what we see today from those four locations.
Remember, the other issue with these transitory, well, we know, guys, that the, the permits fees, the health fees are lower than they are for a fixed stand. And also, I don't know what the inspection routine for these wheeled vehicles are as opposed to a fixed one. That's something Scott Leroy has to address. There are different fees for these things, so you, you, you get a lower fee, and you may have some more difficulty of inspection. I'm not sure about how that.
Well, I think that if we were, I, yeah, I understand what you're saying. I'm, you know, one of the other issues that I'm thinking is that we're setting a precedence here. You know, first we start with Rogers Park, and next we go to Kenosha Lake, and then we go to, what about, we have the schools too, right? That we have to contend with.
There are.
We have the motorized vehicles over at, and at schools, and, I mean, I know we're here for Rogers Park, so let's just stay focused on that. But I just know that, you know, that it can go that direction.
I think one of the issues with Rogers Park is the fact that there's been altercations and there's been police issues and problems there, and I think that's what they're trying to resolve. And that's not to say that might not move to another park. But I think Rogers Park right now is the impetus for us looking at this, to try and get some correction and regulation on this.
Nowhere in Danbury, the, other than Rogers Park, do you have the volume of people and activities that go on for.
Let me ask you a question, though.
You can't compare, I'm sorry. No, you can't. No site in Danbury that even comes close. I mean, there may be an event here or there, something going on someplace, you know, over a weekend maybe, but it's not the consistent flow of, you know, softball, baseball, you know, volleyball, tennis, the playground, the spray park. A, you know, probably one of the busiest places traffic-wise in, in the city.
I set up concessions at the end of my backyard.
Like everyone else, they just kind of.
I remember too, as chairman, as you deal with this, there's another submission to you. It's an amendment to the existing vendor's ordinance, which, again, deals with the revenue issue, because as Nick said, each peddler applies for a permit and pays a two-hundred-dollar fee. Presently, the ordinance only has that one fee, regardless of how many agents you have assisting you in the vending. And the statute prevents us from raising that fee because the state law limits it. But what we did to try to deal with that is that each agent would also pay that fee. So, if, you know, brother law comes in and sells the hot dogs on Saturday, you do it on Friday, they have to pay two hundred dollars. Each one has to pay two hundred dollars. That's not related to the Rogers Park.
That's already.
Necessarily. That's an amendment to the existing peddler's ordinance, which is also in the package for you. So, just so you know, that we try to deal with the revenue generation in two ways. One is to enlarge the vendor fee that we have now, the itinerary guys, anywhere in the city. And the second is the Rogers Park zone. So, just so you know, there's two facets, facets of this issue.
Which is, okay, so then, so then we want to raise the fee for, like, say, Kenosha Lake Park. They have somebody running a concession stand, and when she wasn't there, she had her son there. She'd have to pay.
No, that's not a, an itinerary vendor. The eleven dash four that's in the package there is just for itinerary vendors. That's for the hot dog guy. So, Mike goes out with his hot dog truck, and then the next day, he has his son come in and help him. If the son is helping him, he has to pay another, another separate terms fee. That's what that deals with, yeah.
Hard to enforce, though, is that? It's hard to.
Well, you have, yeah, it is hard to enforce. You have to have somebody who observes an agent one day, and the, and the person took out the original permit the first day.
Because right now, the agent, you can have as many agents as you want.
Correct. And that would be the amendment.
Right. But, I mean, the other thing is, is that with the, or, I'm sorry. But you would have your vendor's fees regardless. You'd have that. Then, I think what would make the most sense down here is then you have designated locations with a separate lease agreement. But you'd still have to have your vendor's fee, you know. That, I don't think that would change, right? That, that wouldn't, that'd be.
Okay, well, let's take Rogers Park for example. If you did what the documents proposes, you have fixed locations, which would pay, you bid them out, you pay some annual fee or something by those vendors, fixed vendors. You have no more motorized guys. The guys with the good humor, would be pedaling under the bicycle, would still pay that vendor's fee
Right.
Under the existing two hundred dollars. Then, agent, they pay another two hundred dollars. So, the two would be mutually inclusive. You'd have both the fixed guys and these two hundred dollar itinerary vendors. But the two hundred dollars change, adding on two hundred each agent, applies citywide. It's not just Rogers Park. It would apply to Rogers Park also, if you had itinerary guys in there. And that's because, remember again, if, if, if you adopted this as it is, non-motorized concessionists could operate in Rogers Park as they are today. No problem. Just have to pay the two hundred dollars, and you're in there. You could do that.
Right.
Subject to his, you know, control over where they might go. But you can't, you couldn't keep off the streets.
But if we have a Rogers Park zone, can't have the same, they would have to stay out.
If he, no, no.
Not motorized, but if you just have a little push cart on wheels, you know, there's a little.
So, you're not gonna have arguments and fights with the guys that are paying, you know, where it's bid out? I mean, we're still gonna have issues.
Maybe with the ice cream, then. Because I, I mean, I don't, I don't know how much pedaling you're gonna do out of a little push cart.
They have the steam.
Hot dogs and hamburgers and fries and stuff.
Again, remember, the idea with the fixed places is substantial, and that's why the revenue would be larger. A push cart would be, you know, a good humor guy, right? Whether there be arguments, the way it is, everybody will know that.
I just don't think that there's a, from a business standpoint, I just don't think there's enough money involved there that they're gonna go through this hassle. I mean, I've never seen one down there yet as far as a push cart.
Yeah, there was one the other day.
Was there?
Matter of fact, she came down Montpelville Avenue to the end, where we built this school and went in that way.
Right.
A push cart.
Yeah, they have the steam.
Because I, I upgraded to somebody down there last year.
Good humor.
Something like that.
They even have steam carts with the steam.
But they have, but they have a vendor's permit.
Oh, yeah.
Right.
You still have, no matter, to vend anything, you have to have that permit.
I mean, did you, did you know that she had, I'm, I'm asking you, did you know that she had?
I saw the permit on the, on the cart.
And I guess an idea for, to have all the agents make sure that they're paid, we're gonna have to have a picture ID that they wear around their neck or something. Is, is they're gonna have to, but then obviously, you're gonna have to have somebody that pleases it too. So, who is that? Is that the Health Department, or is that?
That's the Police Department.
Police Department.
Now, remember that what, what happens sometimes is you have a person who takes out a vendor's permit, and they start expanding their operation, right? You have two carts that are once, now you have an agent, and he's working for free. He didn't pay the city anything. So, that, this addresses.
Right, but you said that you want to change that, so the agents, each agent has to pay.
Right.
Right, and that's where you'd have to have some type of, they don't, they don't have a formal ID that they have on it. They just have that placard that goes on the wall, or, you know.
Right now, the agent would go to the PD, and they would be charged, and the PD would approve that as an agent of the main vendor. But now, you have to pay the fee.
I'm sorry, but can you explain it to me again? So, when you have, so say we're down in Rogers Park, and we have somebody that owns a hot dog, or has one of these specific spots for a hot dog. If he has another guy working with him, he too will have to pay?
Yes, if he's an agent.
So, if you have employee, an employee helping you, each person will have to, so if you have four people working the hot dog?
That's, that's the concept behind, if you, if you will, you're limited to the amount you can charge for an annual fee by law. The only reasonable way around it is to charge another reasonable fee for the additional administrative cost of other people vending next door for the same main vendor. So, yeah, you'd be, if another person applies to help guy number one, he'd have to come in and pay a second fee for that. And you'd have to monitor that somehow.
I think if you look at that list, there's one or two. I think if you look at that list, there's one or two people that hold more than one permit.
What would you say?
Esposito or Elizabeth.
I'm seeing, I'm looking at the list for 2010.
Right.
You have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven.
About the four or five down those, the same name three times.
You only have seven for 2010.
Yeah, Esposito there once, two, three, four times, right there.
Hmm.
Those are four different permits, so I'm assuming that they, they pay...
How long does the permit last for? A year?
A year till October.
Oh, okay.
It's renewable on October 1st.
Oh, okay. So we have 20 right now.
Down from last year, I noticed as well.
Through the chair.
Yes.
The, the one thing I see with what we just talked about there, with the additional agents having to pay that $200, I mean, being in business, you know, help is, is tough. And actually, when I was down there the other day, the one that I went to, the, the woman had her young daughter there, you know, her daughter might have been 14 or 15. But, you know, it's a, it's a family business and it's, and, you know, it's hard to get somebody that's going to be there all the time. So if you have a part-time staff amongst three or four or five people, or whatever, to help out, you know, you're not going to expect these, these people to pay $1,000 in, in permit fees to have all these different agents.
And then pay them hourly, too.
And then pay them hourly on top of it, you know, and maybe, I don't know. I, I remember when I had, when we got a vendor's permit, my father was a veteran, so he was exempt, but I was an agent for him. And so I can appreciate, you know, where that aspect is, being an agent, because if I wasn't able to be an agent, then I would have had a, you know, the additional fee on top of it. Or, you know, if we have that, and like how I do it is because we sell flowers on the street, and it's a one-shot deal. If I got to pay, you know, sometimes I have, you know, different people helping me out, working for me, whatever. And then it kind of, you know, eliminates the effectiveness of actually doing.
Well, these are all considerations that came up. And in fact, I think you guys are dealing now, or maybe have adopted, I don't remember, new health department inspection fees, which would rise substantially. And, and certainly you have a risk by raising any fees of discouraging the very business that you're trying to get feeds from. So for example, if Scotty Roy charges $200 now for an annual inspection of a hot dog cart, I think those fees are scheduled to go up substantially. So with this and with that, you do have, but that's your call. You know, if, if you guys feel that for whatever reason you don't want to charge this fee, it's not a problem. This, these are the kind of judgment calls that are made. But the idea is to generate the revenue, okay? That's how all this comes up.
Right. And I mean, is it the right thing to do, though? Is it do a kind of survey to see what kind of money we could generate? Is it reasonable to ask these people to pay this? Are we going to deter? Do we, do we want to deter?
Right.
Because if we deter, I don't know, that's free enterprise, I guess that's what we're about in this country. And, you know, if, if we make it so unattractive, then we defeated the whole purpose, you know?
I mean, if we think that we're going to get $500 a month for a fixed spot, you know, throughout the season, I mean, that, that may be a little too...
Right.
Where do you, I mean, where do you...
If you go back to the Rogers Park issue, that the, it's, it's not just the revenue. The idea of that is controlling a kind of helter-skelter situation.
And I, and, right, and I agree with that. That there has to be some kind of control that goes on down there, because I can see the chaos. You know, I look down and I see, you know, horns blowing and cars, and especially, now, what is that?
One Way.
One Way. And I mean, right, and it's narrow to begin with, and people pulling them out, and...
People parked on both sides, some in the middle.
It definitely is a concern. And certainly, I can see, you know, what Antonio had said about the safety concern. And, and, you know, it's just tough there. Kids going in between cars and it, you know, split second.
That's our biggest...
Lives are changed. But, so, I mean, if that's, obviously, this is a bigger issue because we're looking at generating, trying to generate some revenue throughout maybe this program. But the original issue is the Rogers Park.
I, I think that this is, this is something that can't be done in just this one meeting alone. I think that we've all come up with lots of different ideas and suggestions, and I don't really think that we can just make a, a conclusion this evening. Because there's a lot of issues that, you know, came up, and what do you think?
But, but do we, we agree that something has to be done?
Yeah, that's why we're here. That's why we're here. And we're not saying we're not going to take any action. I'm just saying that we...
What's occurring now is...
Yeah, I think we've got a lot out on the table. And I, Antonio, when, Mr. Iadrola, when he talked about, I'd like to get some ideas of how much it would cost to build a concession stand, you know, you know, and to find out if, you know, what kind of people would be interested in, in maybe building it themselves. Mr. Cava?
Mrs. Stanley, this is a matter of process. Even if, even if you were to come out of here tonight with a decision on something, it would have to go to the council meeting in July. It would have to get referred to a public hearing in July or August. And then it would have to go on the, the August or the September agenda, which is going to put it out of this year's timeframe anyway.
Yeah, it doesn't, right, it doesn't...
So...
There is no hurry. It's all about concern. We have no hurry.
I totally agree. I think this is something that has to be just talked about a little bit more.
I'd like to get it done before the start of next season.
Absolutely.
We have no hurry this year, but...
So I don't want to make any drastic, you know, decisions right now.
That's why I'm saying that. It's just a matter of process. There's, to rush it now, there's no sense to rush it.
Okay.
Mr. Chairperson, I actually think you guys made some great headway tonight with some of the discussions you've had. I think you, one is you recognize some of the issues. Two is, in my opinion, the recommendation of having a dedicated area that gets bid out. There's so much better control for Nick and I, because now we know who is basically there. If we're getting some reports that this person is creating a hazard, then we can address it. Right now, it's basically a fly, fly-in, fly-out. By the time we even address an issue with somebody driving on our grass, trying to get to a bunch of kids that are around a field, which is one of the calls that we got. By the time we got down there, the vendor's gone. But now, it'll be different, because there'll be a specific location for each vendor. So I think you made, I think as a ad hoc committee meeting, I think you made great, great strides.
And I like Joe's suggestion about the ice cream man. But, being said, having three or four concession zone, you know, concession stands or spot designated areas.
Fixed location.
I think we can only have one ice cream man, because they drive around, they're going to be told where they can pull in to each area. But you can't have more than one, because they'll be racing to the next spot, or wherever they see the next group of kids going, I think. I don't know. But I do think we need to have one. You can't have a park without an ice cream man. Sorry.
Through the chair, Mr. Pinter. Les, now, if we did that, special, you know, designation spots and leased them, legally, do we have to post signs at all the entrances to Rogers Park to let, you know, the world know that this is what's going on here? So other vendors, you know, because how are other vendors, you know, especially that first year that this is, you know, if we adopt something like this? How do you let people know?
Good question. You, you want to post it, but at least year or two, even three, you have the police patrol going in there and just, and maybe Nick, or whoever, he has, if he has people, just telling them, "Look, things have changed and you can't, you know, just drive through."
I think, I think it starts at the permit process, the application process.
Yeah, the application, right here.
No, what he's saying is that...
But they don't have to say where they're going.
Yeah, they just drive through.
They just, they don't have to say where they're going.
But they, you can put it right on here, and then there's a Rogers Park sign, and you're not allowed to hear. You can go wherever you want, but you can't go here.
Because you'll still have to have a vendor's license.
I think if we have to create...
No, right, but for all those other people that are used to going down there, but they didn't get the bid, or they don't, or somebody just came, you know, wasn't here for two years, now they're going to come back, and all of a sudden, they're pulling up to that spot and, you know, or pulling up where they used to go, and now all of a sudden, you know, they have to know, they have to be informed, I guess, is what probably...
Mr. Cava?
Just, just two quick things. One to Mr. Hallis's question. Mike, I think that, and Les could correct me if I'm wrong, but when the vendor applications go out for the next year, there's a notice included in there to every vendor who applies for a permit that there will be no Rogers Park zone, and you have to be permitted to be in there.
Right.
So every vendor who applies for a vendor's permit in the city will get that letter or notice, and they could do that for the first couple of years to, just till they get everybody on board with that. And the other thing I was going to suggest, ma'am chairman, is that maybe the next time we meet, maybe Nick and Antonio could come up with the, a suggested designated area with a, not a, not a really great map. It doesn't have to be a great map, just something with a map of Rogers Park that would show the zone, and then would show the designated areas.
How large?
And how large of an area, and, you know, what, what you would be looking at. So at least you can view that the next time we get together and at least talk about that in moving forward with that.
But one more question to, to Mr. Pinter. You said, "Once they get a vendor's license, that they can go anywhere they want." But if we create the Rogers Park zone, we don't have to let them. I, I'm just reiterating really what you just said, right?
You, you don't have to let anybody into a park.
Public park.
You can, you can give as many peddles permits as you want. You don't have to let them into the park. What you have to do is let them operate somewhere in Danbury. Okay, they can, they can, they can get a spot from somebody, you know, from a private person. They can go on the sidewalk, they can go somewhere else. But he, for example, Nick can say, "Oh, you got the peddles permit this night, but I can't have you in the park, because I have some other..."
I, I get fall's, fall's spring, you know, we're going to, we want to go down the park. And I've been telling them, "There's no more room for additional vendors down there." Now, I don't know if that discourages them from going forward with the permit or not. And when they ask for suggestions, I say, "Your best bet is to find a private, you know, a business entity that has a larger parking lot, that would be willing to have you, you know, park there during the day, during the weekends, whatever it happens to be, to vend your products."
And to elaborate on that, when I spoke with Sean Harity, he said it has to be in a food zone. So it can't just be anywhere.
Of course, I'm not sure exactly definition of that.
It has to be in a food zone. But I asked him about CVS parking lot, that is in a food zone, which is right outside Rogers Park.
Is that, is this?
It is in a food zone. Midas Mufflers is in a food zone. So, you know, I'm just saying, you know, if somebody wanted to, an ice cream man wanted to park there. The, the CBS isn't Rogers Park, though. It's its own property.
Sure does.
It should have been, it's right.
It's, it's that one.
Well, I would like to possibly entertain a motion.
Really?
Yeah.
I'll try.
Well, at this time, I'd like to make a motion just to continue this meeting for more input from the city departments, such as the Health Department, Public Works, Parks and Recreation. And we would meet in, in the future.
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.